This conference will now be recorded.
Effie.
Uh, Dave Street.
Had to find my mute button.
I need to talk to Dave just for a second.
Yes, Dick, what can I do for you?
Uh, I need you to send me an invitation for the golf course advisory committee that's meeting at 5 o'clock. If I ever got it, I'd, I'd delete it or something. I don't know what happened to it, but I don't have it anymore.
Okay, well done, sir.
Thank you.
That one starts at 5 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. We'll do our best to be done by, uh, 4:56.
There you go. That'll make it fit.
And the mayor's got a new hat on. I can't hear him, but he's got the new hat on.
Does he?
I, I have a 430.
Oh, there you go. So 426.
Yeah, see my, see my new hat? It's got City of Lago Vista.
There you go.
And Frank has volume now. Look at that.
I do?
I mean, unless you mess it up.
All right.
Can you hear that?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Oh, I knew there was something that you would do. I didn't put my screen up behind me. Oh, well.
Hey, I've said in, I've said, I've said in one of these conferences where a fellow mayor had, one day had his wife cleaning the house behind him, and then the second day, he was shooting it from his bedroom and his wife was still in bed. Yeah, he did turn his camera off long enough for her to get out of bed, but, yeah, for a while you could see her tossing and turning under the sheets behind him.
Well, I would, I would have found someplace else to have to meet. Of course, he may not have been out of bed very long himself.
Right?
I've been watching some of the stuff on TV where they're having virtual, shows. Uh, the other day Howie Mandel was on, uh, some show. I'm not sure which one it was. Something up during the day Sue was watching. I walked in, they were talking to him. He was in a very nice suit and jacket. And, uh, they asked about something behind him. He went back to talk about it. He was wearing nothing but his underwear.
One of my favorites is to watch the Ellen DeGeneres Show from home.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's been hilarious.
Mayor just had a message from Counselor Williams. He said that his surface has started an update. As soon as the update's completed, he will sign in.
All right.
And I see Counselor Collins. So right now we're missing Williams and Barthow.
And let's see, we've got April Kelly, Emily Samples, Leitha Guy. Is that, is that the only citizens we have right now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. It's good. We got, we got at least three. April, you're gonna have to be quiet because you're not muted, so.
You muted it.
There's a lot of people that aren't used to these things such as us, and that mute button is actually pretty, pretty hard. All right, are we ready? I have 3 o'clock.
Mayor, we are recording. You have Sandra, so you're set.
All right, let me pull up my thing so I can read it. All right, here we go. Right, notice is hereby given that the Lago Vista City Council is holding a special call meeting on Wednesday, June 3rd, 2020, from 3:00 PM to approximately 4:00 PM as prescribed by VTC government code section 551 dot 041 to consider the following agenda item. We, this is a work session and our agenda item is fiscal year 2021 budget workshop. Uh, Sandra, please note that, uh, we're missing Councilmember Don Barthow and Councilmember Dave Williams. Uh, I believe Dave is gonna try and join us here in a little while. We'll mark the note when he, time when he joins us. Uh, and I'm gonna start with our city manager and let him introduce something to everybody. And then I will give my briefing on, uh, the budget process and then I'll turn it over to counsel.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor. So, uh, the first thing I, I wanted to kick off is, uh, we had some questions online today. Uh, one of the questions was, what is the purpose of today's workshop? And as the mayor teed it up already, uh, the purpose is to get input from the council so that we can prepare an effective budget. So by the time the council receives it, if there are options, and as one counselor mentioned, packages that the council would like to see included, we put that information together and we include that in our budget document that we submit to council. So that's the, that's the prep today. You don't, you do not have any handouts. There's not gonna be anything that we're, that we're emailing out that you need to pull up. This is all an informational session that we talked about, uh, the last couple of years of trying to get the council ahead of the budget process and then for us to be able to walk through. So that leads us into an awesome next step is, one of the things that we implemented this year, we, last year we asked council if we, uh, for the funding to do a complete online financial system. Uh, and that was to use ClearGov. Council at the time said, we don't have a demand in our community. Let's not go into that function. What we've done this year is we've utilized, staff has utilized ClearGov as our budget module. So we have a module that I am clicking now. Your whole screen's gonna change. I'm gonna share my screen with you and show you this, uh, this budget module that we, uh, the staff have been using, um, this year to start preparing information. If you're looking at the screen, you're gonna see a list of each of the funds that we have, that we present and operate with for the fiscal year. For example, right here on the top, you're gonna see general fund for 2021. Then you're gonna see utility fund, aviation fund, and so on. Over here on the left, we have items that we'll use as tools that will allow us to forecast. It'll allow us to use different capital requests, do some benchmarking. And then ultimately, once the council approves and adopts a budget, we're gonna be able to create a budget book from, uh, the documents that, that we work on. So what we'll, what we're gonna do is I'm gonna open up the general fund to show you this as an example and then tell you the next level of what's gonna happen. Uh, one of our, uh, Counselor Robbins had asked about seeing the line items this year, specific line items, not the broad based line items, but every expenditure. What we have with this document and we'll have, the council will be, uh, you'll be given access to view this entire online, software, uh, this ClearGov software. So we'll go over here to contributors and for example, um, I have, I'll go to contributors here and show you on the screen slowly. Come down to here, you'll see, for example, uh, Mayor Ed Tidwell right here. So then Mayor Ed Tidwell can review this general fund document and see where the preparation for the budget is at now. What staff has done and working with ClearGov is submit, I believe we submitted 10 years of fiscal year data that we have as backup data so that we can look at forecasting based off of full 10 years. So if you look at the screen, you'll see these green bars in the middle. These will show you, uh, actual expenditures for 2017 at 6.5, actual expenditures for 2018, 2019, budgeted for 2020. This is similar to how we look at our budget every year and then budgeted estimated right now at 2021. At the top of this screen, what you're gonna see is, as of right now, with staff working on, on their departments, the expenditures for the general fund are at 8.9. The revenues are projected at 8.5. So as it is now, the projected deficit would be 444,870 something, 870, there you go. So this document will be an online module that not, not just Josh and Star will use, but every department head will be able to utilize and then the council will be able to look at it. So at the end of this meeting, excuse me, what we wanna do is, we wanna schedule time for two members of council and then two members and then three members to be able to have a quick 30-minute training on this, um, software so that you can scroll through and look at expenditures and revenues by fund, by department, uh, by operation. Uh, let me show you one more quick example here and then I'll, I'll stop with this because this is just an overview of it. Based on where your picture dialogues are, uh, move your screen a little bit to, to look at this, but, let's see, let's slide it. If I go to expenditures here and I click expenditures, then you're gonna see all of these general fund expenditure line items right here. If I go down to general government and then I click on city council members, I can scroll across and see that the FY19 actual was 21,399. FY20 budget was 30,500. And then the FY21 budget right now shows $70,500. So that's, that just shows what those expenditures for that department are. These items over here on the left are the larger categories that we use when we present the final budget for people to be able to review and be aware of for the operational year. If we drill down and we click on services, then we will see professional expenses at 1,000. We'll see legal services at 40,000 and then we'll see miscellaneous and maintenance agreements have no line item. For next year, this legal services, now that we have in-house legal, can be zeroed out to $0. And so that's able to be brought over here to make that zero and all legal services go through the legal department. For example, now we scroll over to legal, then we see the legal department as a budget here. So you'll be able to see every single line item that's in the budget. If it has a, if it has an operational code, then we have it listed here. And so hopefully this will allow for that increased, um, uh, transparency and any type of review process for the council during the budget preparation process so that you can see the changes that we're making and how they're impacted. So you saw there, those numbers at, um, deficit currently at 400,000. If you come here to the utility fund, this fund will show you, um, once it's clicked, a projected surplus of $16,356. So that utility fund shows right now without any type of, of capital and expenses changes that, um, it would still, is projected to make $16,000 next year. Again, you have revenue, you have expenditures, you can drill down on each and see how the numbers have changed over the years. And we've already put that information in, um, to, to get that there. So that's what we've worked on. That's just a, a new added feature that city staff has now, and this is very similar to the program that we requested last year that to have online information for, uh, for anyone to view, not just staff and council members, but for anyone in the community. If we had, if we were able to put this system live on the website, then someone could click it and view the budget this way and maybe be able to look at some items and, and compare year-to-year actuals and budgeted numbers. So that's just a brief overview. Like I said, at the end of the meeting, Mayor, we'll, we'll ask the questions. We'll try and figure out some scheduling. I'll probably send an email to council and try to, uh, set up some dates for a quick 30-minute walkthrough so people can look at how to use it and we'll go from there.
All right, so, um, you mentioned public viewing. At what point will we roll this out for the public to view?
So it's not set up to have an unlimited access, Mayor. Right now it's only set up for user accesses and that's why it's easier for the council. We'll add the seven, uh, the mayor and the six council members and you'll have the access. We would need to, uh, once we adopt the budget, we would need to purchase that additional software that we looked at last year, um, to create that. Now, however, Mayor, at the end, once we have an adopted budget, the budget book will be very similar to this document. And so once it's adopted, we'll add that to the website and the public will be able to see it then.
Okay.
So, once we, and once we have our draft that we present to council, we'll have that presented online as well so that everyone sees it then. Uh, one of the questions today was if we had a meeting this evening, what documents would be available? We'll put all those documents on the website and keep it running and updated so that people can walk through the, the workshops with us and have the same information. Hey, that's that, Mayor.
All right. Um, so I'll go in, unless anybody has some specific questions they wanna ask Josh right now. Is there, or do you wanna hold off and? Okay. So I'll go into my little overview, um, and the direction that I'm looking for as far as, uh, our budget process. And what I wanna start with is, as close as we can come to, um, with a, a zero-based ballot, uh, budget process. With this new program that Josh has, we can pretty much do that just by entering the numbers and stuff. And so it's a, it's much a, much better process, I think, as far as creating our budget going forward. Uh, if you were looking at the numbers when he had it up there, it showed our projected revenues right now and it showed a growth of about 4.48%. Uh, if you know the, in 2019, the state legislature passed the laws that require cities to only increase their budget at 3.5% without going into mandatory, um, voter approval, okay? With that being said, the size of our city is exempt from that regulation to some extent. So we don't necessarily have to meet that 3.5%, but I think as a starting point, our revenue should be based at that 3.5% to be in the same spirit and in the, in line with what the state legislature is asking city governments to do. So I'm asking that we start with a revenue based at the 3.5% growth and then, uh, and see how that, how that works, uh, to start with. And then I would like to see us have a second set of numbers, that shows if we decrease our tax rate, you know, 1 cent, 2 cents, 3 cents, um, you know, what that does to our revenues. I know last year each penny was about $120,000 in revenue for the city. So, you know, I would like for that, for us to use that as our starting point, um, to see if we can go below that, if we can actually go below that 3.5% growth rate and be able to provide some, some relief, you know, to our citizens and our taxpayers. From, and then from there, we gotta make sure that our, our CIPs, once we get past maintenance and operation of the city, then we look at our CIPs and make sure we can, uh, fit all the CIPs that we need to get done into our budget. And, you know, that's gonna be done by fund because your utility fund's gonna have CIPs, your general fund's gonna have CIPs, airport, each, each parks and recreation, each department's gonna have their own CIPs. We gotta make sure that all of those are fit in there as best as we can. And then finally, after, um, oh, I'm sorry, in those CIPs, I think during this budget process is also when we need to look at our fee structures and our, all the rates and stuff that go along with each department. So if we're needing to make any adjustments to say our water rates, water and sewer rates, this is when we do it. We don't do it in the, in the middle of the year. We look at our, we look at our budget, we look at our CIPs and then we make sure that our fee structure matches the revenues that we need to obtain to make sure it's fully funded. Right now utilities was showing a, a profit of $16,000. So who knows, maybe, you know, once we get through this, we might actually be able to, to lower the water and wastewater rates. I haven't done the numbers, what 16,000 would look like, spread out over 4,000 customers. $4, $4, $4 a year roughly. But anyway, that, you get my drift on, the rates and the fee structures. Uh, I think we should do it at the beginning of the year. Not, not address it in the, in the middle of the year because we're crunching all of our numbers now. And then, once, once we've got all that done, then we can start looking at, um, what, what we call our white sheets and our, our, our wish lists, our little, amenities and things that, that the citizens would like to see, as far as, um, quality of life type things that we can put into our budget. So that's, that's my overall guidance, to staff, um, because I, I would like to, I would like to see if we can lower our tax rate to some extent, you know, and, and still be able to complete all of our CIPs and, and things like that. So I know, I'll turn this over to counsel. I know Frank had his hand raised already, so I'll, I'll let Frank start it off.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Uh, you indicated you wanted to do a zero-based budget, but I think what you described may be something a little different. Josh can jump in and correct me or others on the council may. Zero-based budgeting from my experience is frankly a horror show. If you do a true zero-based budget and Josh is gonna have to justify everything, right? I, and he's nodding. I would, I think what you described isn't zero-based budgeting. What you're starting with a baseline number. Right, okay. Now, if on the, on the 4.8% growth, is that 4.8% growth in expenditure?
No, that was in, that was in the, on the revenue block in the middle.
So it was a 4%, so what, what Josh has put together so far, and I understand he's essentially got his budget. We just haven't seen the whole thing. Is that correct, Josh?
Mayor, so what we have now, this is the department request and we haven't gone through and, and done any type of editing or, uh, fine tuned out the revenue. So as the mayor said, if I were to share that screen now, the expenditures are at 9% up and then the revenues are right now at 4.4% increase.
So is the cap, the state law cap 3.5% a cap on expenditures or a cap on revenue? It's a cap on expenditure, isn't it?
No, it's not. It's actually on the revenue generation from your taxes. So it's actually not just, uh, it's not just revenues, but it's tax-related revenue and it doesn't include the new construction for the year. It's an increase over the current year's, um, revenues.
Yeah, and so, yeah, I did say zero-based budget and, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a dream. That'll probably never happen just because of the work that goes into it. You know, every, you're turning around every year. I mean, you approve the budget in September and January is basically when you gotta start working on your, on your next year's budget and it's just too, it's, it's probably too difficult even for a city our size to just start at zero. But I know with this, this software that I've looked at, we can, I mean, we are starting at a baseline. So maybe the zero-based isn't the right word, but, you know, last year's, last year's baseline, I guess I should state and go from there. And that number, that number that shows up there, that revenue number, that 4.48, I'm sure includes all of our sources of revenue, not just our tax-based revenue. So you take out some of the sales tax and some of the other revenue lines, we actually might be at that 3.5% right now. But, that, you know, that's, that's my goal is the 3.5% and then if we can get under that, it's even better, so.
Well, what I, and I think I agree with what you, what, what, how you wanna play this, Mayor. I'm just, at this, I'm trying to make sure that we're working on the same set of numbers, more or less. In other words, your baseline would be what this year's expenditure number is, this year's budget. Okay, therefore, the 8,970,000, 970,110 bucks that Josh showed us is, includes what I've called packages, correct? In other words, there's some, there's some additional expenditures in that.
There are some additional in there and that's something that we'll have to go back out and highlight so that you can look at specific sections. And that, for as Counselor Robbins would call it, Mayor, it would be if there's a, an equipment package that's in for the police department, those numbers may be in. So for example, if the police department requests a package of four new police cruisers, they may have $180,000 included in that number and it's either been added or not added. And so those would be items that we draw attention to in our discussions.
Can, can I ask some other questions, Mayor? Josh, you and I talked a little bit about forecasting the other day. Does the forecasting model that's in this program, you know how it works? Is it curving or Lee Squares or what?
So, Mayor, the, the fun thing about this is it actually, it uses the N minus 2 model. So it takes the total number of years of the budgets that we've placed into the system and then it creates a forecast line. Now, we've not created any new forecasting yet, so I can't show you the sample of that, but it would first give you a, it would give you a line, a point line model and then it's gonna create a curved forecast based on the points in line in history on each line item.
That sounds like Lee Squares.
Um, I don't know Lee Squares. Sounds like a great guy, but, um, we could call him and ask him.
Well, that, that's a, it, yeah, you and I, and, and I guess my last question has to do with when we get together and have this 30-minute training, we're gonna get to visit with you a little bit about stuff. Too, I would assume.
Mayor, as much as you can visit within 30 minutes.
So Josh, question on that forecasting. Uh, do you know if like, like on our CIP plan, we have five years worth of CIP plans tentatively, uh, listed Would those be included in our forecasting so that we can see? Uh, you know, what it's going to look like three, five years down the road?
So on the future CIP, Mayor, yes, we'll add the future items in for the forecasting because that'll help us as a planning module. What the forecasting is going to do without any futures is give us the eight, 10 years previous and then predict out eight following years. So it's all, it's going to cover virtually 18 years of data, 10 years of fact, and then eight years of forecast based on the previous years. So the CIP, yes, sir. We'll be able to add those into the documents and, and follow what the future expenditures are planned to be.
Thank you. Yes, Frank.
Josh and I talked, or excuse me, Arch and I talked about this a little bit. I doubt 10 years of data is going to be representative or will be a good forecaster through future years because we're growing so much faster over say the last four or five than we did 10 years ago. I mean, frankly, 10, 10, 12 years ago, we were doing 25 houses a year. So we're growing a little quicker now. And if you, and if you plug in those earlier years, it won't be representative of what we'll actually see in the near future.
Mayor, and what you can do when we get into that, to that forecasting and we start creating those, uh, those diagrams and those models is you then remove the years that you don't want to use. So for example, if we decide we want to put in the last five years and just go back to 2015, it'll project out three years past what we're at. Maybe we decide that since we've had four good years of growth, we use four years and then it forecasts two years outside after the current year. So maybe our model goes from an 18-year model down to a, to a six-year model. But we just have to remember, whatever we take out, it's N minus two. And we use, that's the range that we put it into.
Okay, but, and before I move on to the next council member, I wanted to, I forgot something in my little overview here. During this process, there's going to be, you know, projects and our things like our rate structure that council members are, are going to want information on. And you know, we have the Open Meetings Requirement Act that we have to deal with. But at any time, if, you know, if, if there's two or three council members that have questions on the same topic and, you know, to help staff, if, if we want to set up a meeting where two or three council members get with a staff member to ask questions. You know, that's fine. And then if we find, you know, we can do that, just like with this ClearGov meetings that the city manager is setting up, we can do that. If we find out that something needs further study and we need to form a subcommittee to study something, then if, if we're going to do a formal subcommittee, then we need to bring that to council and, and make sure each council member has the opportunity to volunteer for that subcommittee. And where it's also transparent to the public that we do in fact have a subcommittee researching something. So moving forward, the next few months are going to be very busy for us and for staff. So, you know, don't think that everybody has to come in one-on-one to, to talk to staff. It's, it's okay to come in two or three at a time. All right, so who's next?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
My comments are pretty much going to be held to need those numbers so we can start looking at this. Right now, it's all kind of, well, might like to do this, might like to do that, but we need to see where we are and what kind of funds we're going to have available to us. I would ask our city manager, not going to say for sure, but I'm, my understanding was that the three and a half percent growth was in your tax rate. The thing that the legislature was trying to do was stop the increases that were occurring in the tax rate that cities were charging to the citizens. Uh, growth expansion in our ad valorem taxes, is that supposed to count against that three and a half percent?
Mayor, and that goes back to what you're saying. I think you hit that one earlier is that the, the new growth doesn't, it's not included in the three and a half percent. So that's why, that's why we want to be able to, to articulate that. If you remember last year, our problem was when the county didn't get us their, the assessors didn't get us their numbers and calculations until well into August. So we tried to hold out on the process as long as we could before we presented our draft budget. And so what we want to do this year, the sad thing is you're not going to have the hard numbers, but we're going to use our forecasting and put those revenue items in. And as the mayor was saying, if we're trying to hold the line at or close to the 3.5, then that gives us that revenue number. So what we'll do is we'll, we'll use that 3.5 projection on the ad valorem existing and then we'll throw in the new construction based on our permit numbers. We'll put that number on top of it and then you'll see what the difference is on the revenues. Then you'll see how that revenue number can cover the expenditures. And if there happens to be anything left over after CIP and expenses, then you go back through and start picking what kind of projects you want to see happen. So I think you're spot on, Mayor Pro-Tim, is that it's only on the, the existing ad valorem that you have and generating more tax over that year.
Okay, just.
Yes, Dick.
Just a minute, Dave. One other thing. The county comes in and does a 10% increase in the ad valorem taxes. That's no action that we take. Are we held responsible for reducing taxes to cover that 10%?
Yes, we are. Unfortunately. And that's why, that's where the new growth helps. Because that doesn't count against this year's. It'll go into the books next year. So, yeah, I mean, we could get into a, you could get into a cycle where the county is raising everybody's taxes, taxable value of their home at the maximum every year. And we're going to have to cut our rate every year to stay in line with that three and a half percent overall growth and you know, it's just one of those, until the state takes action and does something with the appraisal districts and, and limits them hopefully. You know, it, it's just something we're going to have to deal with and it makes it tough because you know, that 65 cents, there's a certain portion of it. I'd have to get Star to answer this question, but of that 65 cents, I don't know, 28, 29, 30 cents of it is for INS on your, on your debt and that doesn't ever go down until you pay things off. So every time we drop a penny off the rate, it's coming straight off the MNO side, not the INS side. You know, so it's, it's, it makes it tough.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Dave, Dave Williams.
Yes, how you doing? One of the things I wanted to ask is in the forecasting, Josh, do you know what kind of growth rate, for new growth rate you're using?
What growth rate for the future?
For the future, yeah.
No, I don't know. The, the rate is developed off of the previous year's budget. So it's not like it's going to, it's not like we're putting in a 5% growth rate. It's developed off the previous year's budgets that we use and the actuals. So what they'll do is the rate will be determined by the actuals of the four to 10 years that we use on prior years. And that's where, that's where Frank was talking about, if years we had low growth, then you're going to distort the growth rate.
Yeah, okay.
Arch, Tim? Tim?
Yes, you know, this legislation that we're dealing with is very hostile to cities and counties if we've been following politics with our Speaker of the House and the governor. I'm not sure, well, I think we have to be very, very careful in what we actually do in reducing taxes because I think I'm very concerned that if we start getting on going down. And for all of us that have attended those educational classes about this tax rate, it's going to be very, very difficult to go back up. Now, I'm not sure depending on this next election, what happens with the state legislature, whether that will be looked at again, but I'm real hesitant on the, just the tax rate itself from going backwards. And I can see we could cut, you know, reduce fees and services to the residents of the city easily. I'm just very, very unsure of this tax program. Now, the realtors, whatever they call their multiple listing, they sued the state assessor for using their, the realtor information to, to raise rates, to, to value homes. And if you'll see this rate, you, this year was flat, even though your taxable amount went up. I don't know how that's going to show praise out, but I just doubt that this, this was provide primarily to not prevent your taxes from going up, but from going up too much. So I'd have to do a lot of convincing before I really want to go backwards on.
Well, Tim, and Tim, you bring up a very good point and this next year could be a great example because of what we're going through with the, with the coronavirus. You know, I, I know Austin, central Texas area is still doing very well, but you know, they're, they're, if you read nationwide and stuff, they're expecting home values to drop a decent percentage because of all of this. So it is, you know, there is that potential that uh, we could lower our tax rate. You know, a couple of cents this year and then next year, if home values drop a certain percentage, there's no way we would be able to make up that three and a half percent without you know, increasing the rates and it may have, we may have to go back up four cents. Instead, you know, we'd drop it two cents this year, but go up four next year. So yes, that, that is a, that is a real thing and this year might actually pan that out.
Now, I was, I was reading in the Dallas paper that the city council in Dallas was free to raise their taxes up to the 8% level without the election because of a declared emergency. I'm pretty sure it was that Abbott has declared an emergency with this COVID and I still think, I think we're in it now. I don't know if it was specific to Dallas or not.
I know Austin, Austin's trying that as well.
Well, if they're in a declared emergency right now, then it's, we're not bound to that rule.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see how that plays out. I know there's going to be, there's already some fighting because supposedly when it was written, the, the declared emergency was for stuff like hurricanes and to protect cities that are wiped out and stuff. Their infrastructure is wiped out. I don't know if a pandemic is going to count as a declared emergency or not. Uh, because supposedly your infrastructure is not getting wiped out. So uh, I don't know. We'll find that, we'll find that out in this time next, next year.
Yeah, the, the council, the advice that council got was that they could take the full eight, but then they were, they, they couldn't do it. So they kept it at the three and a half, even though legally they were advised by their attorneys that they could, but of course it'd been political suicide if they'd done it.
But you know, we have to, we have to keep in mind that we, we work for 9,000 citizens out there and, and
I understand.
With the spirit, we we need to try to get with the spirit.
Taxes, but I don't want to get into that slippery slope of going down too much. And not being able to make it back up.
Yep, we gotta, we definitely got to be careful.
All right, thank you.
Arch?
Says you're on, but we can't hear you.
You may have to turn off your video. If your bandwidth isn't enough, you may have to turn off the video and just use your microphone.
I just got the same problem I had.
I tell you what, I did a little test in my house to see what was using juice and this machine sucks juice.
Arch, we had you for a second.
I'm trying to turn off some stuff.
That's better.
Is it okay?
I can't hear.
Oh, there you go. Okay, all right. I just wanted to have some clarification on a statement you made earlier. Uh, you stated that the tax cap, the three and a half percent is a tax cap, right? Nothing, nothing more and that we are not necessarily held responsible for it since we don't meet the population number?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's not a true cap. It is the rollback rate. And if you try to go above three and a half percent, it kicks in a mandatory citizen election. So you, you can go over three and a half percent. Um, but then that would require voter approval. And again, however, because of the size of our city, we are not subject to that three and a half percent mandatory election. Uh, however, again, just, I would like for us as a city to try and stay within the spirit of the law and follow that if we, if at all possible. So yeah, we are, we are exempt, uh, but that is a guideline I would like for us to, to at least go by.
Understood. I just wanted to make sure that I, that I actually understood what you were saying.
Yeah, it's not a true cap. Most of the cities refer to it as a cap because, I don't know, your larger cities don't want to have to go get voter approval. You know, personally, I think, I think voter involvement is, is fine. So yeah. Anyway. Anybody else? Josh?
Mayor, I wanted to, you, you mentioned a couple of times the CIP. I wanted to just hit a brief comment on the capital improvement projects. One of the best things about having this discussion right now is anyone that's driven around Lago Vista in the last two weeks has seen their capital improvement dollars going to the common good and that's for these street reconstruction projects. So for next year, right now, on our five-year CIP from last year that was adopted by council, we have roughly $9.7 million of projects allocated in the CIP for next year. So typically, those projects are going to be outside of the general operating budgets, whether it's utility fund or general fund, uh, those dollars aren't going to be allocated. For example, and anyone can look this up on the city website under the FY21 budget and the CIP, also a separate line to show you the CIP. The utility projects for next year are $4.2 million. Of that 4.2, I believe we said, one, two, three, four of those projects total 1.35 million dollars out of impact fees. So the 1.35 million out of impact fees, we have a little over 2 million in our wastewater impact fees, and we have a little over 2.5 million in our water impact fees. So impact fee projects have sufficient funding to to fund them for next year. So that would take, that would take that 4.2 million down to roughly 1.9 million plus or minus, or 2.9 million, 2.9 million. And so for those projects, if the revenues aren't there for the operating revenues for the year to exceed the expenditures, then those projects either have to be financed, bonded, or paid out of reserves. At the current date, the utility fund, the fund balance reserves would have approximately enough to cover those projects. And so that's, that's kind of the thought process I'm hoping that the council and the the community looks at in terms of saying, in order to do the things that we need to do to improve our utility system, we need to figure out how you pay for those items. And this is, these are the options. Then when you go down to the street program, which was adopted by council last year, next year's annual street rehab is roughly $2 million. So same kind of thing. You have to look at if the revenues in the general fund are enough to cover those items, which they're not going to be because operations are there. And then you have to look at whether or not you would bond these projects, which I would definitely discourage the council from ever using bonding to pay for street projects. But you could still do it. Or do you finance some of those? Or do you pay out a fund balance? So again, every CIP project that we look at typically is going to come from a fund balance or a reserve account. We have to take out the number of dollars spent in the current fiscal year from those reserves and then start with that base for next year. And I think that's kind of what Mayor Pro Tim was talking about in terms of what is the, what is the foundation point for those projects for next year? And then if you go to the to the park next year, the sports complex park, that project's budgeted for $900,000 for next year. Well, that's just a number that we're putting out there because we haven't completed the design phase. But at some point, we know that we're going to have to allocate the next round of funds to that project so that we can do, so we can complete the project and do what we all love. And that's circle it out and complete these projects at hand. So those kind of numbers, that's why we say that the budget process is year round, because every month when you receive a financial report, we're wanting you to look at that information and ingest it so that you can theoretically regurgitate it upon demand in the during the following 12 months and know that these are the revenues that are at your disposal to be able to spend and to maintain healthy fund balances so that you have something like COVID that that hits, we can continue to operate without having to go out for additional dollars. Because we've seen, we've seen multiple Texas municipalities being threatened by zero operating reserves and layoffs and reductions that they just can't handle. One of our benefits, Mayor, is the fact that we don't rely on our sales tax to be a major operating function. But from this year, current FY20 to next year, we're looking at a roughly 23% increase in revenue. That revenue can help us provide for different operations or even for capital projects. And so if you're going from $520,000 to $670,000, that $150,000 could help create new funding sources. One of the things that council did this year to create a new funding source was to increase the permit fees on new construction to provide for street maintenance. That may create a a fund of of $200,000 to $300,000 that council gets to look at next year for street reconstruction funds. And that's a blessing because we want to continue with the street projects. And and one of the best reasons I want to continue is because they look good, the construction's good, and the process has been good. So I'm hoping that after this workshop, people will take the time to look at the CIP. Mayor, you've talked about it now about four different times. And that's our, that's the things that we need to focus on, hopefully, before we start the new projects.
Yes, and that's where, depending on which fund it is, some, you know, if it's got a a fee base to it, this is when we need to make sure that our our rates, like our water and sewer rates, are set to cover our CIPs that we want to get done. So water and sewer rates may be something that change on a frequent basis or an annual basis until we until we know for sure that we're got it set so that we're, you know, bringing in enough to cover the next year's CIP project. So. So. Anybody else? Yes, Frank?
Quick shot. You guys have got me with my little list. I left one out. And I want to mention it because Josh is working on it. So my list of so-called packages you've got, I'm not going to state those now. But the one I left off was the airport CIP projects and Josh's pointings. I just want to, that that's something that that's going to be part of it. I hope will be part of our capital improvement program for next year. And and Josh can nod and say it because he he's already working on that with Tex dot Aviation now. Those are probably going to be the projects that Tex dot Aviation says you guys need to do, correct?
Mayor, we actually had that conversation today that that Frank's talking about with our planner at Tex dot. And we pitched the idea of of these projects for the airport. And as we told them, you know, in our discussions, we're excited about being able to expand the services of our airport. But we know that the funding is going to have to be there. So even if we, one of those projects we've been talking about are the hangars on the on the south end of the runway. If we're able to get that hanger project, that may result in $100,000 match out of our fund balance. But we know that it could return revenue if we do that project. So that's a benefit. And then maybe that revenue creates pads our airport fund to provide for the larger projects moving forward. But until that airport fund has sufficient dollars, then those matching dollars have to, as they have in the past, come from the general fund. So, yeah, exactly, that that's, those are more projects that we need to make sure we're doing our best to add into the CIP for the following years. That's what happens, Mayor, when we get an active advisory board group, then they want money. So we've got to be able to figure it out.
Well, and the good thing is now the airport has reached a point where it's got its own enterprise fund. So, you know, now that now the task at hand for council and staff is to make sure that it's a self-sufficient, self-sustaining enterprise fund. And with the fuels, the fuels and the hangar space and things like that, you know, those matching, those matching funds, hopefully, we'll be able to generate, you know, through our amenities that we're providing, and it'll be a self-sustaining fund.
Yeah, Mayor, I say on all these projects, our goal, and and everybody, this council understands it, but our goals with any of the projects are to make our Lago better. No matter what project we're doing, while we were sitting here, the mayor and and I received a message from Dave Freeman commenting us, complimenting us on the street repaving projects. This is a small part of what you've allocated for the year. It's a small part of what you're allocating for future years. But these projects are definitely value add for the community. And and the more we can do there, just like an airport project and a golf court project and a dawn point project, the more we can do, the more value we're going to add to the daily operations of the community. And it's a, it's a, it's an awesome blessing, especially during COVID and especially during the the reaction from from the George Floyd beating and killing. It's a value add that our community can appreciate and at least sit back and say, you know, it sure is nice to have Thunderbird as a good streak. And and I know, Mayor, for you, you run Bogey often. You know, for you to run Bogey now, it's still going to have the same number of cars trying to run you over. But at least the track, at least they're not going to hit a pothole before they hit you this time. They're going to hit you cleanly, and you're going to go into one of those nice ditches we've been working on.
Again.
Once the track on those streets are better.
All I know come July and August, that black pavement is going to be hotter than that gray pavement was.
Yeah, please put your shoes on this time.
So we're getting short on time, and this is a public meeting. If council is done, I'm going to open it up to the citizens. We have about five or six are in attendance. On the top right hand of your screen, if you're, if you can, you'll see a chat box. If you could just kind of, I don't know, put a message in there, raise your hand or something. Somebody let me know who wants to speak, because I don't have any pictures. I can't see your hands. But if there's anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment, I'm opening it up to you at this time. Or if you even just want to unmute yourself and I'll see your icon go green, then I'll call on you. Emily Samples?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to say, please don't get run over. That's really my only comment at this time.
Oh, these should be flat, not rippled with the cock because the potholes have been repaired.
Okay, well.
But I do, I actually do run Bogey Ford just to try to get traffic to slow down.
Oh, well, how's that working for you?
Haven't been hit yet. Like, like Josh said, I did fall in the ditch one time, but, yeah.
I've been there. I've rolled into a ditch into the barbed wire fence, so I feel that. But yes, please be safe to everyone, and and thank you, guys. And I participated as much as my one and a half year old would allow. So good luck with all of your budget work and and everything you're doing. But thank you all.
Yeah, do you have any comments on the process? Anything you'd like to see?
Not right now. I'm I'm just absorbing all information and and just trying to be, you know, up to date. I was really glad that you you brought up the three and a half percent cap because I just, or not cap, like you said, not technically a cap. But I was informed about that just earlier today. But, you know, good to know that we're exempt from that so that people aren't making an assumption that that's a hard and fast situation.
Yeah, that's true. But again, we do want to kind, we do want to stay in the spirit of the law if we, you know, if at all possible. So we're going to do our best to to do what other cities are required to do, so.
Okay, well, we appreciate it.
Sure.
All right, I'll sign off. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Anybody else out there?
Mayor, I did receive a comment back from ClearGov. And so what I'll do is I'll email the council as a whole right now, and we'll try and find if you'll respond back to me and let me know the dates at work and the times. And then I'll use the calendar from the ClearGov gentleman, and I'll schedule you guys so that we can walk through it. The sooner you get this, the better, because I know it takes time to test it out. And I want you to be able to see the numbers as we're talking about it. And it's it's kind of as as Frank said today or in his email, if you can see it, it's going to be tangible and it's going to be more accessible. So I think it's going to be a value add to the process.
Tim, did you have something?
Yes, what is our estimated date of returning to in-person meetings?
I was going to bring that up at tomorrow night's council meeting during our, during the section where we talk about our our schedule and and stuff. So at the end of next meeting, we'll discuss that and see what everybody thinks.
All right.
I sent Tim a message on there, so he saw the date. I think I predicted the date pretty well.
Well, you know, I have to go back to dressing in long pants and such, but what the heck?
What date did you predict?
Put your shoes on.
You just have to ask Tim.
Okay.
It's now or never.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask one more question?
Yes, Dave Williams.
On the on the CARES funding, the CARES program, I've been seeing a lot on TV about other cities requesting that same funding that you're requesting from CARES.
Yes.
What does that, whatever funding we get from that, where does that go? Does that go into the general fund? Does that go get broken up among the departments?
It will not go to the city for the most part. We are allowed to cover some COVID-related expenditures. We have two avenues, the CARES Act. And then if there's some public safety type stuff, fire, police, EMS, that's not covered by CARES, we can reach out to FEMA. But the CARES Act is covering most everything. But again, the portion to the city is only going to be for expenses, not for lost revenues. So the majority of it will be used in different programs and plans to help businesses and cities, I mean, citizens with issues that they've had related to COVID-19 and some future economic development. Again, related, it's all got to be COVID-19 related. So, yeah.
This morning, this morning on the news, they were talking about San Marcos, and they were requesting the CARES money to help build a new facility. And I was like, I didn't think we could do that.
Yeah, I know there's some economic development in there. We are counsel, our legal counsel right now is is combing through the CARES Act to make sure that what we submit to Travis County, you know, will get will get approved. But I I don't know yet exactly what all the county is going to agree to. So we're going to, we're going to put several several different portions in our plan and submit it to county and 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 see. So I don't know how other cities are doing that. I know, you know, because like the city of Austin, because they're over a certain size, they got direct funding, you know, $170 million. And, yeah, I, you know, with a million people, you know, I don't know, I don't know how they're going to spend all $170 million. I I don't know if there's going to be some projects for economic development or not. I don't know. Yes, Frank?
I think the answer is that the staff putting together and or the mayor and the staff are putting together a package to send to Travis County. And that's the way apparently Travis County has decided to allocate the funds based on what we say we're going to spend it on.
Yeah, and they're going to vet it. So we just, we just don't know exactly what their vetting guidelines are yet. So we're putting together our plan and we'll submit it and 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 see. But it's not coming, I can tell you, it's not coming to the city, though. It's going to be for us to disperse, you know, to the citizens.
Okay.
Mayor, we have that item on the council agenda tomorrow. We have it as a placeholder, hoping that we would receive the interlocal government agreement so that council could review that with legal tomorrow. Mayor and I not feeling real confident that we're going to see that document or even hear its name tomorrow. So to date, even though the commissioner's court voted on it yesterday and in theory approved the document, we haven't heard anything today. So tomorrow, we'll at least be able to just give an update of the list that the mayor and I are working on. And he's in contact with other small cities in Travis County, trying to figure out what our plan is. But the whole goal is to is to cover the expenses that we've incurred and then to disperse the dollars out. Potentially, we could max out anywhere from $390,000 to potentially $500,000, depending on what the population number is, based on their $55 per capita allocation. And so hopefully, if we're on the high end, we'll be able to disperse that money back to the local businesses that the mayor's been requesting information from. the mayor's been requesting information from. So we'll have a little more information tomorrow at the meeting.
All right. Well, unless anybody has anything else, one last final call for comments. All right, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned at 4:05 PM. See you tomorrow.